All right, I'll start admitting.
How many more you got coming in?
There's 15 more. It takes awhile for them to come in. There's 15 more people. Give me a second. I'm still adding.
That's not a problem. And they're all online, right? Because the meeting's open?
I got somebody on a phone.
No, no problem.
Jerry, you want to call the meeting to order?
She's still letting them in.
All right.
Let me know when you get everybody in, Karen.
Yeah, I will. I will. I'm still adding. They're still joining. Sorry. It just, it's a long process. I don't know why, but...
Well, there's a lot of them.
If we all met in a room, we wouldn't have that problem.
But Ken, if you also make someone a co-host, they can also admit people. So you don't have to do it all.
They're all in.
They're all in.
Thank you.
Okay.
They're all in.
I'm gonna bring this meeting to order, the planning board meeting to order. Any announcements, open session, or public comment? Seeing none. Planning board members, there has been a letter sent to the planning board on the Rowell Road subdivision questioning the publication and the agenda notification being insufficient. I've read it. I've checked it. And I concur with the letter. Therefore, planning board members, I would like to take the Rowell Road subdivision out of order, bring it to the top, and basically continue the hearing to re-notify everyone rather than have everybody sit here and go through Lieutenant's Island and the ATT Communication Tower because that's going to last, the Rowell subdivision is going to last about 30 seconds.
I have a question, Jerry?
Yes.
The Rowell subdivision, is that something we're going to continue if they got to refile?
No, the filing, the filing is fine. The advertising as per state mandate needs to be expanded. And our agenda item, which we usually keep this brief by mass general law, needs to be expanded.
But technically...
Basically letting everybody know a little bit clearer that it's 70 Rowell Road, the name of the individual, number of lots, et cetera.
Do you want a motion?
Does that mean you're going to reschedule the discussion of the Rowell Road proposal?
Well, yeah.
My question though, Jerry, is...
To your question, but this is right now between the planning board as to whether or not to move it up in the agenda. Yes, Alfred?
My question is if we move it up in the agenda, do we have the latitude to extend something that wasn't advertised properly?
No, the, what we're doing is basically we can move it up into the agenda to discuss because we can change the agenda anytime we want. It's a matter of whether or not we're going to simply continue it due to notification problems.
All right. I've talked too much.
So based on, based on that information, the first vote would be to take it out of order and to bring it to the top of the agenda.
Right. Do you want a motion?
I would love a motion.
I move that we take the article on Rowell Road subdivision and move it to the top of our agenda.
Second? Second? Who seconded it?
David.
I did.
Alfred got to before David.
I don't care. David's turn. Go ahead. I don't care.
Okay. Any discussion on moving it up? Seeing none. All those in favor? Yes.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? No. Okay. That's now Rowell Road discussion to continue it to the August. Karen, is that August 18th? Next meeting? Karen?
Yes, hold on. I gotta get my calendar up. Sorry.
I get it before you do.
I have a question.
18th is...
It's August 18th.
Okay. Yes, Alfred?
Yeah.
Well, if this thing wasn't advertised properly and everything, how can we extend, I mean, it's a question. How can we extend something that doesn't meet the requirements for this meeting? That's what I, that's what I'm understanding.
Aren't we just rescheduling it?
We're just simply rescheduling it. That's, that's basically...
And we're going to re-advertise it.
Going to re-advertise it. The green cards are going to be sent back out again to certified letter with more, more information. Any information that we have received to date would stay in the file. It was just a matter of there will be new abutter notifications. But the number of copies, the extent of those copies, what we require as far as filing is all fine. It is simply, I'll take the word simply back. It is, it is the advertising that is inadequate and the agenda item on our agenda that is inadequate that should have been expanded on. It's that simple.
So the viewpoint of the abutters or neighbors or whatever won't be discussed now, but it will be discussed at the future meeting?
That is correct.
Will the public commentary period be extended?
Well, what we have is...
We were told we had to make whatever comments, I don't know, a few days, a week ago, sort of.
Well, this is all coming from a group of individuals who have hired attorneys who have come up with this. So it's nothing to do with the planning board. This is, this is coming in from the individuals surrounding this lot. So it's out of our control.
Jerry?
Peter Rosenberg's question was simply, is there an extended period for comment?
Oh, but no, the, the, the meeting hasn't started. So comment, the comment to the general public, the hearing portion of this, which is the public hearing, hasn't, there is no public hearing at this point. I shouldn't, there shouldn't even be any conversation at this moment. You have not lost any rights. It will be on the 18th of August. At which time any documents that have come in since our publication on the 18th will now be available and things of that nature. So this is a formality that the planning board just has to follow because it's due process on publication. And that is that simple.
Jerry? I'd like to, Jerry?
Yes, Alfred?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
So we continue 70 Rowell Road to August, was it 18th?
Yes. I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Before we call that, Peter, you online? Because I can see you.
Yes.
Peter, you have the date, you have the date on which you originally submitted this to the town clerk?
Oh, me, yeah. May 12th.
May 12th?
Yes. And we were hoping, I didn't realize what the schedule is like. I didn't realize what you guys were up against with town meeting coming up and everything. And I had been naive enough to hope I was going to be on the next week's agenda. But then after town meeting, we found out it was scheduled for today. You know, so part of the, I guess, incompletion of the, of the notification was the fact that we didn't have today's date because back on, when we sent out the letters, we had no idea when it was going to be. Although it doesn't seem like there was any doubt or confusion over when it was scheduled for. So, but I'd be happy to do what I need, ever need to do for August.
Okay. I'll be in touch with you as to what you're going to need to do. And are you, just so I have your consent before I take the vote, we have 120 day, 90 days or 120, and I got to check it from the date you submitted to have the first public hearing. If we need to extend that, I'm going to make the assumption you have no problem. And if I ask and request, you'll, you'll forward a letter requesting that we continue?
Yes, I will.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, board, it's been moved and seconded to move it to the 18th discussion. Yeah, Bonnie, I see you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just think we should inform anybody who has not yet submitted a letter and wants to of the deadline for that next meeting for, for submitting the letter so that they don't submit something after the deadline. I mean, we got...
The 18th of August, the cutoff date, the cutoff date for any submissions of letters would be noon on the 12th of August.
Yeah.
12th of August. What about the letters that were already submitted?
Letters that are already submitted or ring file and that would be read at the public hearing or...
On the 18th?
Most of those letters, quite frankly, are almost identical in nature. I'm not sure I'm going to read all 18 to 20 of them. I may choose to pick up a couple of points, but you, you have a chance to, at the 18th. Yes. So...
The full planning board has all the letters.
Yes, you do. Right.
And we've read them. Because we thought we were going to discuss it today.
All right. So the motion seconded. Any further discussion from planning board members on the motion to move it to the 18th of August? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Unanimous. All right. General public, I'm, I'm, I can apologize. I am sorry. It is truly a oversight on our part with everything that was going on. I'm sorry, I didn't catch it. What they're doing is, is the attorneys are wanting us to follow every i and dot every i and cross every t, and we will do that. And I'm sorry, you all had to take the time to be at this meeting, but it had to be postponed and that's the way it has to be. So...
Of course, they're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, Karen.
Certainly, if you want to be brought to that.
Nice faces.
Okay. Moving on. Thank you very much. Moving on to 100 Way, 100 Lieutenant's Island approval not required application?
That's better.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don Poole from Adamos Land Survey for the approval not required plan. Do you want me to continue or is there anything else you need to read?
Alfred, you jumped, you still there?
Oh, yeah. I didn't leave.
All right. I know Alfred's got some questions.
Would you like me to explain, would you like me to explain the purpose of this?
Yes.
Sure. Go ahead and then we can pop in with some questions.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Members of the board and to the Chair, this plan was actually submitted in December of 2008 by Slade Associates. They clearly had done the survey for it. The miler then sat in the files ever since then. The land court requires that all the field work be within the last six months. So this plan virtually had to be redone. It was endorsed. Actually, I have a miler right here on, I believe, December 17th in 2008. This plan is a reproduction of that, of that A&R plan. I wrote that in a letter to the board and submitted a copy of the original plan that was endorsed.
So basically, if I get that straight, Don, this is simply the exact same plan that Slade Associates did in 2008, but because it wasn't filed, and I realize land court does say it has to be within a certain period of time, you're just recertifying bounds and locations and that's it. No change.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. It's, it's all, it's basically the same except, you know, it's been, it's been awhile. You know, one of the bounds is a little bit out of position. The lots are the same. I held the same lot arrangement frontages. Everything's the same, but you know, the, the numbers are slightly different. You have a different survey or different equipment. It's been 13 years since anybody's been out there. So yes, but it is a reproduction of the 2008 plan that was endorsed then.
Yeah, and I can see that my endorsement as well as Alfred's is on it. Okay, Alfred?
Well, I have a concern because when we did this in '08, the actual vehicle tracks weren't laid out on this thing. And the fact that they're laid out now in front of Lot 13, the vehicle tracks actually go out of the, the right-of-way in front of that lot. Why, why can't we get that back into the road where they belong?
I'm sorry. Is that a question for me or?
Yes, I apologize. Yes, that was a question. I was going to...
Well, conceivably, it could be done.
Because when Chet and Dick did this before, it may have been lax on my part. But I think we should have seen that then. But I mean, that's, we can't go backwards. We just go forwards.
The traveled way hasn't moved and you're correct. It wasn't shown on the original plan, but the traveled way has been in existence as long as the house at the end of the road has been in existence at the very least. But it hasn't changed since 2008. I agree with you, Alfred. It should have been shown at that time.
Okay, so I'm not, so I'm not missing, I'm not missing it either. It wasn't, now I can understand Alfred's, it wasn't on the original 2008 plan showing the road layout. And you did show the road layout. Okay.
I showed the traveled way. The road layout was shown, of course, on the 2008.
The road layout was, but the access wasn't.
That's correct.
Okay.
So my question is, I don't know who owns Lot 7, but since we're doing a new lot, when do we clean up the fact that it's not where it belongs?
It would be my recommendation is a private way. That it's up to the owners of the property to do that.
Which owners? If you may?
The ones that have rights in the way.
Well, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be more put on the burden of somebody creating another lot? Because now the right-of-way has, has an extra lot on it. So that if it needs to be brought up to better standards, I would think it'd be at the the new, I shouldn't say the new owner, that at the expense of the new lot.
I guess it hasn't been a problem for the lot at the end of Way 100, so I don't assume it'd be a problem for Lot 13. If it is, and I'm sure that the abutters, that they'll have to resolve it with the people that live across the street from Way 100.
Yeah, but it's not, I'm sorry, Alfred. Do you want to go, keep going?
No, I just, I think that it's wrong to multiply problems. And that's what we're doing in this case. We're creating a new lot through an A&R.
You're creating a new lot. If it wasn't changing, they could continue to, to do the right-of-way as is, but they are in fact creating a new lot. And is that adequate access over private property?
I mean, they are, their, their access does go over Lot 7 on the opposite side of the road, if I'm not mistaken.
Right. I don't see that on the...
I don't think we have that.
I mean, I have the big map. I don't see it.
On the big map, if I may, where, where the bound between the two, between the original lot and the new lot, the vacant lot,
Yeah.
it says 122.74. It's in the street.
Yes.
Okay. Now, if you continue to the, away from the lot, you will see the vehicle tracks go outside of the 40-foot private way.
Yes. Is that, is that the dotted lines?
Yes.
Well, that's weird. So, so private way is a road and then there's vehicle tracks that are sometime coincide with the road and sometimes cross it?
Yes. In other words, back in Lieutenant's Island, that's what happened, is they have a lot of bounds out there. So they just wrote, they put the road in wherever they wanted, sort of like subdivisions before we required as-built. So those roads, many of those roads are within the road 40-foot layout and many of them are just like this on private property.
Yeah.
So the question then becomes, if the status, you want me to go ahead, Alfred? Do you want to go ahead?
Well, I want to state one thing. I mean, we're creating, if this, if this is legit, which I believe the majority of it is, we are creating a new lot, which is going to have a huge value on it. The people who have lived there aren't asking to create a new lot, the rest of them. So I don't think that they should go back on the rest of the people in the subdivision. I mean, the only reason this came to light is because somebody else is creating a new lot. And the one who's creating the new lot, in my opinion, should get this fixed before they get the new lot.
And, and the solution you would suggest, Alfred, is?
That they take the road, excuse me, the vehicle tracks and, and move them back into where it belongs. By doing so,
Into the 40-foot way.
They're going to move the road closer to their own house. So I can see why they wouldn't want to do that, but it's where it belongs.
And it becomes adequate access because it's in the road layout. It's not on the private property.
I don't believe we have adequate access because of the fact that it's not within the road layout.
Right. I concur.
Yep. Makes sense to me, too.
So I don't believe this meets the requirements of an A&R.
So, Don?
This is the road.
Yeah. So, Don, I think if the client comes back and relocates, if they leave the, the vehicle tracks on Lot 7, that's fine. But since they have a right, apparently because they're subdividing, since they have a right in the private way, they can pick up where it leaves, goes outside of the layout and bring it to their lot line, but create it so it's inside the 40-foot layout, that would be adequate access. And I think that's where the board is going. To deny it based on adequate access or rather than deny it, withdraw it, clean that up, because I don't think it's going to be outrageous to clean up and bring it back.
Well, Jerry, let me just ask this. What I understand Alfred's saying is the application is for an A&R, and if, if we're talking about the road, it really isn't an A&R at this point. So how can we move on it anyway?
Well...
Because it's filed erroneously.
Okay, it is, it is an approval not required plan because it is not a subdivision.
Not?
No.
It looks like it's...
You can create a new lot, but it's not creating a subdivision. It's the creating of a new road. You, in order to subdivide, the difference between approval not required and a subdivision is the creation of a new road. The road layout for this new Lot 13 runs in front of Lot 13. So they have a 40-foot laid-out road, but they do not have the access to that lot within the road layout. It's on private property. So they either have to get an easement from Lot 7, which is one way to do it, or relocate where it goes off outside of the laid-out road on the Lot 7 and continue it within the layout to Lot 13. Now they've got adequate access. You follow that, Bonnie?
Hmm, yeah, kind of.
Don't say yes if you don't.
But yeah, I'm...
I don't see Lot 7 on my map.
Lot 7?
It's on the old one.
It's the old, it's the old Lot 7, which would be to the east.
Do you see the 119 on your map?
Across the street.
Jerry?
Yeah.
Do you have, do you see 119 on your map?
No.
Excuse me, do you see 119 above the the north arrow on the new map?
119.
No, I don't have the... I don't have the new map. All I have is the one we signed, Alfred.
The ones who have the, the new map,
Yeah.
if you look past the vehicle tracks heading towards the right-hand side of the paper, it says 119?
No.
That is not exactly where, but that would be Lot 7.
On the other side of the road?
Oh, I see 119. It's down in the middle of the page. Yeah.
Yes, and that's, that's the lot that the vehicle tracks go through.
But the vehicle tracks, oh, I see. There's, they go through it like, like this teeny little slipper goes through it.
Yes, but they, but they are no longer in the road layout.
Got it.
So it's not being moved much. We're talking about considering the value, and I know when I was supposed to go value, but considering the value of Lot, to move that over into the way, we're talking very, very little money here. But it makes it adequate. It cleans it up. I'm sorry, Don, but that's what it does.
I know. It was adequate in 2008 is all I can say. And I bring up the fact that where it says private way.
I got to disagree with you. It was, it wasn't even an issue when I signed it or Alfred signed it because we didn't see the road.
That's not my fault. The road hasn't moved. I'm sorry. That's not my fault, though. The road hasn't moved. And it was the same road in the same place is what I'm saying. I mean, the fact that you guys didn't do your due diligence or whatever, that, that's not my fault. And I can ask a question, though. Up above where it says private way, where it kind of scoots out of the right-of-way a little bit, do I, is that an issue for you, too?
No, I, I don't think that's an issue.
I don't see that's the issue because it's not in front of the lot.
Right. We're talking about that lot having due access. And in order to get to it, you've got to get on, you're crossing across the street.
Back to someone else's lap.
And the, the other thing with that, Don, is what we, if they had recorded the plan in 2008, instead of, and I know why they didn't. They didn't want to pay the taxes because they didn't want to sell it, then we got a second bite at the apple, sorry to say. We smartened up a little bit. And you gave us more information than we had in 2008. That's simple.
Do you, Jerry?
Yeah.
To Don? Don, you didn't make any mistakes. I want to be, so that when you go back to the client, I, I don't believe you made a mistake.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I would like to have a written decision of the board, though, to, you know, to get to the clients before we go, you know, so I can explain to them how to go forward.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, board members, and, and Don needs to, needs something to go back to his client. Do you want to, do you, I'll give you that chance, Alfred. Wait a minute. Do you want to continue with discussing this? Or do you want to say that it's, that basically you're going to turn it down because it's inadequate access? And you want to see that road that crosses or goes outside of the road layout on Lot 7, but, put into the road layout, then it's fine?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that from Lot, I can't get all the way back on 12. Trying to do this so that it's clean for, for Don. I'm going to say from...
About from the point...
Well, I'm trying to pick, I'm trying to pick a point so that he's aware to formulate it on the map, just other than... Well, I'm trying to pick, I'm trying to pick a point so that he's aware to formulate it on the map, just other than being arbitrary. Because I guess we're going to say.
What about the point where it, it, it leaves the private way?
Well, the problem with that is.
From the private way.
Because it leaves the private way in front of Lot Twelve, and it's also missing the private way at the beginning of Lot Twelve, and I'm not trying to get the beginning of it stuck in this.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a recommendation.
Yep.
I would suggest, uh, as a motion, that you find this to be inadequate access, and it can be resolved by, uh, clearing enough of the road where it exits the right-of-way to have suitable width for vehicles as the rest of the right-of-way.
Within the road layout?
You just want us to widen out that side so that there's enough room within the right-of-way.
Yeah, I want, yeah, we want, we want the access.
Yeah.
It, it should, it should be, and I, since I don't have it, I'm at a loss here. Um, how wide would you say that vehicle track is at the present time?
I, I believe it's about twelve feet.
Okay. So.
Well, that's a clear area. You know, there's a clearing on the side, you know, and just, I mean, the traveled way itself is about ten feet.
Okay, so if we could do, if, if we could do this, and I hate to do it, but we might as well clean, if you're going to do it, Dawn, you might as well clear it up to the satisfaction of the fire department. Just move it back into that road layout so the traveled way is ten feet, but you got at least two feet of clearing on both sides, so you got that fourteen-foot wide that, that they want.
I, I don't think I can get rid of the part that's outside of the right-of-way, but we can widen to within the right-of-way. Would that be adequate?
I, I think you have to get rid of the part outside of it.
No, I, I don't, I, I don't think so, Alfred. If, if he wants to leave, if he wants to leave that as a driveway for, for them or leave it on their property, he can, but it's the, from that point on, it's got to be all within the layout.
You want fourteen feet from the side of the road, the layout, heading towards the property for the block for the fire department.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
That's fine.
That's adequate access. And I, I think it's a rather short distance. Um, I don't know what the tree situation is out there, but that cleans it up. It doesn't destroy it. Um, and it, it shows the planning board that there would do, there was good access within the road layout. I mean, that's why we have as-bills. Um, so I think that's what needs to be done. So.
So my motion will be to.
Just decline it. Inadequate access, and I think Dawn, Dawn knows exactly what to do and bring it back.
Okay, but I want to be very, I want to be very, I want to be very clear. I'm not looking at it for the front of the road. Okay, Dawn?
Beg your pardon?
I said I'm not looking at it for it all the way down Lot Twelve because it does the same thing down the other end, just where the new lot is.
Right, just the part that's outside the right-of-way. You want to have it wide enough within the right-of-way.
Right, basically from where it's a south, uh, thirty-nine point fifteen, not quite that far, up to about where it says south zero-nine fifteen on the other side, just that short space in the middle.
Yeah, it's just got to be widened out a little bit. I understand. It's kind of thing, it's going to be ugly, but, um, I understand.
It's also going to clear it up and get it in the right-of-way. All right, so basically the, the motion would be, if anybody wants to make it to the, um, to decline the approval not required for inadequate access. Any motion?
Yeah, I, I agree with that, but will we see a couple stakes on where the, where the edge of the road is?
When he brings it back in?
Yes.
Sure.
All right. Do you have a problem with that, Dawn?
The edge of the right-of-way, right?
Please. Maybe one like where the intersect went into it, when we're, came out of it, and maybe one in the middle, so you'd have to put three stakes in.
Could you make this part of your decision, Mr. Chairman, so I can explain this to my clients?
Oh. You need a motion.
Alfred, you want to make the motion?
Sure.
All right.
Um, we want this to become an, an adequate, um, entrance within the forty-foot private layout. Be moved into the layout under fire department regulations for a fourteen-foot box. We wish to have it staked where it intersects going out of the, um, right-of-way at both the beginning and the end of it, and we'd like it staked in the middle so that we can see that the thing is completely in the layout when it's done.
And that's the improvement?
To make it adequate for an A and R.
Right, okay.
Second?
Second by David. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone against? Unanimous. Thank you, Dawn.
And thank you for your time tonight.
No problem. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Um, AT&amp;T Communication, uh, Communication Tower.
Good evening.
For it.
Would, would you like, uh, us to begin?
Um, all right, wait a minute. This is a public hearing on AT&amp;T Communication Tower, um, special permit under the Wellfleet zoning bylaws, number one. Touch bases on that. Um, did you? I'm sorry, your name is?
Hi, I'm Michael Dolan from the law firm at Brown-Rodnick in Boston.
Okay, Michael. Did you, this is an unusual case for us. Um, I see that this is not going to be the first case. This is going to be the first case, but not going to be the last case, probably. Um, usually we're dealing with communication towers a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet tall, and that's how these zoning bylaws were written for. Um, they really weren't written for something of the nature of a telephone pole. Um, did you, because my packet was misplaced, and I've already said that, did you submit along with your package a request for waivers on what we usually require, for example, balloon tests and all of that kind of thing?
Um, let's see, an express list of those? No, but we, uh, believe we did make tangential references the same in our forty, thirty-page brief.
Okay, um, planning board members, do you want to have him make that presentation first and see where we go? Everybody okay with that?
Sure.
All right, go ahead.
Great, thank you. So, um, I think you're all probably aware and familiar with AT&amp;T. My client is a wireless services provider who has licenses to operate a wireless telecommunications network throughout the country, including here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Uh, AT&amp;T is proposing a small cell antenna installation on, uh, a replacement utility pole um, in the Newcombe Hollow Beach parking lot in order to deal with coverage issues on its network. Uh, the small cell facility will be mounted on a replacement ever-source utility pole. Uh, AT&amp;T does have several existing macro antenna sites, which are the larger sites that the chair was uh, referencing, that you may be more familiar with. Uh, unfortunately, those aren't providing adequate coverage to this area of Wellfleet, and this small cell facility is a way that, uh, AT&amp;T can provide targeted coverage to a small area with a very de minimis, uh, physical, um, uh, facility, uh, in close proximity. This facility, in this case, consists of two small cell antennas side-mounted to the top of the forty-three-foot replacement utility pole uh, at a centerline height of forty-one feet, and the antennas don't extend above the top of the utility pole. There's a small equipment cabinet with two remote radio heads uh, mounted inside and one additional radio side-mounted on the pole. There's also fiber optic cable and an electric meter with shut-off switch. Uh, all these items are shown in our plans, and I, we also submitted a photo simulation that I think, uh, you would all agree, uh, demonstrates the stealth design of this facility. Uh, and I would guess that most people looking at it when it's done uh, would not think it is anything more than a utility pole with, uh, additional equipment on it. Um, i- in, in short, uh, with this site, uh, AT&amp;T will be better able to handle data at faster speeds, with better and more reliable coverage. Right now, there's high consumer demand for this in this area of Wellfleet. There's also a, you know, a positive public safety, uh, benefit to us locating this antenna facility there. Um, and as mentioned, we are requesting a special permit uh, for a communications facility pursuant to section six point one eight of the zoning bylaw.
That's simple, huh? Um, I know it's in here, but I asked the question anyway. What was the size of the equipment boxes that will be mounted on the telephone pole?
They are, uh.
Twenty-three inches or something?
The antennas are twenty-three feet, uh, three inches, uh, square and very narrow. It's just two squares on each side of the pole. Those are the antennas, and then the, uh, uh, equipment box is, let's see here. That is seventeen, uh, seventeen, uh, point three nine inches by thirty-two inches by fourteen point eight three inches for four point seven seven cubic feet.
Is the height, is the twenty-three-foot antenna height within?
I'm sorry.
Height of the telephone pole?
What, uh, twenty, it's twenty-three inches, uh, is the size of the antennas.
Twenty-three inches, not twenty-three feet?
Correct.
Twenty-three inches?
Yes.
Those, that twenty-three inches, is it within the height of the telephone pole, or is extending above the?
Does not extend above, no.
Okay. All right.
Hmm.
Um, planning board members, questions?
I, I just have a question.
David?
Tangential, but, um, I'm wondering how much of the problem there, in terms of coverage, this is going to actually address? Are there people that will still have poor coverage in that immediate area?
Yeah, so that's a good question. Um, you know, the, the target here is, uh, the actual beach area and related parking area. And these small cell facilities, as you can well imagine, don't have the coverage footprint of the more traditional eight-foot, uh, type antennas. These are twenty-three inches. Um, we did include with our applications, uh, coverage maps, which show the coverage from this proposed facility. Um, typically, these sites will, uh, you know, provide about a quarter of a mile of coverage. So it's, this won't be a panacea for a much larger area, but this targeted area, uh, it will provide, uh, very good coverage for those using the beach recreationally, and as I say, if there was an emergency or what have you.
Does this reach the beach itself?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Um.
Bonnie?
Question. Um, this is on National Seashore Land. Are, are, is, are the National Seashore representatives at, at all, or have you approached them? Have they expressed, um, I don't know, any support for their proposal?
Yes, so thi- this pole is actually on town property, uh, and it's not on National Seashore property, so, um.
I read.
It's in the National Seashore Zoning District, but it's not on their land.
Got it. Right, that's what I read. Yeah.
And I think you, if I read it correctly, I, any more questions, Bonnie? No. Um, if I read it correctly, what's the nearest structure to this pole?
Um, the nearest existing antenna facility or structure?
No, just the existing structure.
Uh, there is a, the closest lot line is about six hundred and sixty feet away.
Closest structure.
Which I believe has a structure on it. Now, there's, there's a small, uh, I don't know how you're defining structure. There's a small temporary shed that goes there for parking in the parking lot. That's a structure, as well as there's a more fulsome, uh, uh, cabana-type building down further in the parking lot. But as far as structures, as in homes or things like that, the closest one is over seven hundred feet away.
I think that's the bathroom. How far off the pavement is it?
Uh.
It doesn't look far at all from the picture.
Yeah, it's, it's actually what we, what the utility does here is they, uh, put it essentially in the, uh, right adjacent to the existing pole, uh, because they want to have the same ability to provide their service, uh, from that pole. Um, and, you know, that, that existing pole is just on the edge, and this new one will be right next to it. And then, of course, they remove the old pole after the new one goes in.
Okay, so they're, they're basically, you're setting that pole, they're taking, they're going to hook up their, their power, which currently is to the old pole, to the new pole, and they will then remove the old pole.
Exactly. In fact, there's an existing guy wire on the existing pole, and that'll be on the new one, too. It's, it's essentially, uh, a swap-out for a new, uh, a, a new pole.
And so if I under, if I read it, I think the additional height on the new pole over the old pole is probably very similar to what we did downtown Wellfleet. I think it's an additional twenty feet for the new pole.
This is, uh, nineteen feet.
Nineteen feet?
Yeah.
Over the old pole?
Correct. It was, the existing one's twenty-four, the new one will be forty-three feet.
Just from a visual, from my own perspective, is that about the same size as the new poles that went down Main Street in Wellfleet? Are you familiar with that?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I've got one of my colleagues on here, David Ford. David, if you're able to join, are you familiar with the, uh, the pole that the chair is referencing?
Yeah, remember we did this one. I'll pull up the drawings for reference, just to make sure. It, it is similar, but, uh, as far as the exact difference, I'll, I'll double-check, but I'll, I'll circle back.
Okay, but basically we were in that same kind of.
Yeah, same, same ballpark, correct, yep.
Okay. Um, because I, I think ever-source has been going to that higher, whenever they were, and they're replacing an awful lot of poles in Wellfleet, are going to that higher pole and raising those lines. Okay.
That's right.
Uh, planning board members, any other questions? Consensus? Thoughts? Help me, guys.
I, 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 it's, it seems positive to me, especially because the town has been talking about the inadequate cell coverage on the beaches and how difficult that is during emergencies. I mean.
Any shark attack. I mean, they, now they're going to have direct, direct access by phone.
We have to do this.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, Alda, you're quiet.
Um, I think my questions have been answered. There was talk of twenty-three feet, and it's actually forty-three feet.
The old one is twenty-three. The new one would be about forty-three.
Forty-three.
Yeah, somewhere around there. And that, and that's why I was leading to the question for prospective. Those are very similar to the heights that the new ones on Main Street, probably within five, six feet of what Main Street's new telephone poles were as they went down the street. Um, that they just put in over the past year, year and a half, and the process of changing over. David? Need any questions?
No, no, I understand the difference between the new and the old pole, so, yeah.
Okay. Alfred? Oh, that's right. He said he had to jump out during this part of it for a little bit. Okay, um. This is a special permit. So consequently, we've got to write up findings of fact of why we should grant the permit. The findings don't have to be written tonight. We can take a vote to grant, subject to approval of the findings of fact. We can think about those findings and come back at the next meeting, but at least that will give a start and direction to AT&amp;T that they can start dotting their i's, crossing their t's, and work, work ahead. So is there anybody that wants to make a motion or is prepared to make a motion on, on this special permit?
I know that we approved the special permit request from AT&amp;T for the communication tower at Newcom Hollow Beach.
As submitted?
As submitted.
Second?
Any second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Five. With Alfred...
Absent.
Stepping out of the room. Okay. We'll, we'll put those findings of fact on the eighteenth, and get those out to you just as soon as possible, but you basically have approval, and you can start your process. And, hey, you got any questions?
No, thank you all very much for your time tonight. I really appreciate it, and I know AT&amp;T does as well.
Do you think, just out of curiosity, now that that hearing is over, do you think this will, I mean, we've got La Cansalo, we've got White Press, we've got other areas in the seashore that are having some problems? Do you think that this is probably going to be more of the norm that we're going to see in the future?
You know, it's, it's a good question. There, obviously, nobody wants a hundred and twenty-foot tower in their line of sight, so these small cell facilities are very attractive to the land use planning community, because they're attaching to utility poles. So I know AT&amp;T has, has been using these types of facilities to fill in a lot of targeted gaps throughout the country, and this is a great example of one where, you know, this is pretty benign to the eye, yet it's going to provide meaningful coverage in a targeted way. I don't think, of course, it would make any sense for the company to do this en masse in areas that eventually could have a more traditional tower or rooftop facility, but these are, I think you'll see a few more of these in targeted areas where they make sense.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
For sure. Thank you all.
I'm all right.
Thank you.
I put it on there just for discussion. Discussion at town meeting, ADU bylaw.
So what bylaw? I'm kidding.
Yeah. You should have been standing at the mic.
Oh, you were awesome.
It's a little embarrassing when you get almost unanimous vote on it. Obviously, they had their following. I mean, I, I was, I realized it was late. I realized Danny wanted to get that meeting over. I had expected, to be honest, I, a little bit more discussion and some questions on a, on a couple of things, but it just didn't appear to happen. For whatever reason, and I won't go into what those reasons might be. I really didn't, I think I know there was a couple of you there at the town meeting, so you probably have a better viewpoint than I did. I was, I was basically in a little bit of shock, so consequently, I didn't really pay too much attention. Like, the way I was hearing it was, it was almost unanimous. I didn't even think I heard, heard or saw a, a negative card go up. At that point, I don't even know if they were, but I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in on it, but...
I think there were some, but I don't, I didn't count, but didn't seem like all that many.
Yeah, I'd seen unanimous. So I guess the question then becomes to the members, and, and that's why I usually put, after town meeting, I put whatever town zoning bylaws we had on the next agenda, kind of just to kick around as to whether or not, based on the vote of what happened at town meeting, if it was turned down, do we, do we proceed to rewrite something based on the input? There was really no input on this one. I was, I was hoping to get some more input, but there, there really wasn't. It was either, it was yay, that was it, we won it. So therefore, my question, I guess, to the board members is, do you feel it needs, for the present, any future discussion or time to, to tweak it further? Or should we leave it alone and see what happens in the next six or seven months as to the numbers and if any abuse does happen, or whether or not, not, nothing happens? Sort of like I'm throwing that out to the table here.
No, I like your six-month idea, Jerry. I don't know, I, I think that would give us, I mean, we have things that we're concerned about now, of course, we've talked about plenty, but that would give us maybe some additional data, and it would still give us time, I guess, to, if we were going to propose changes in time for the next town meeting. Right?
I think so, David, I, I just...
Barely.
I'm sorry?
It'd be, it'd be close, six months would be close.
Yeah, it, six months would be close, and I, I think, and I agree with Beth wholeheartedly, and that was where I kind of was going, is I'm not sure, just like when we did the AADU, I kind of like to leave it on the table that as permits are pulled, I'm sorry, yeah, as building permits are pulled, simply building permits. And as the new TA, who I'm sure is going to be appointed as the liaison for the lead to get these contracts, sort of get a lay of the land as to, okay, how many do fall out of the AADU program and convert into the ADU program? And how many new units, permits are pulled? Because it's going to take time for building plans, building permits, for the health, the whole nine yards. I'm inclined to kind of go where Beth is going. I think if we discuss it six, seven months down the line, I'm more inclined to think that we're going to have a better, better idea for the following town meeting, rather than 2022, is my gut, David. Unless there is a rash, a quick rash of building permits that have been pulled in large numbers, in multiple numbers on the same property, I...
So Jerry, how do we, I think that makes sense, but do we have a, a ironclad way to keep track of all that? How does that work?
Well, we, we, and here's, here's what we get back, I, I, as I see it, here's where we're going to get back into enforcement.
Right.
Obviously, now that the AADU is no longer on the books, those individuals, whether it be twelve or whether it be seventeen, whatever the exact number is, are going to be making a decision as to what they want to do.
Right.
So I think the next filing, and Alga's got that, and if Alfred would hear, he could tell me as well as Alga, I think the filing for that, Alga, is normally is a year in September? When you file?
December first.
December fir, September first.
Right.
So I, I think the first go-around will be, that will have an indication. It may only be a slight indication, because I'm not too sure how much the general public is going to really realize all of this come September first, because it's, for all intents and purposes, it's really only seven weeks away.
Before the zoning board of appeals?
No. There's, there's simply, the way I see it is, they're simply not going to file if they choose not to...
Continue.
To continue as an AADU with the assistant TA on September first. And at that point, simply petition the building inspector to walk in and inspect their unit to make sure the smokes and for the health and everything is up to date, which then qualifies them as an ADU.
Right.
And then can register as an ADU, and they can choose to charge whatever rent to the AADU tenant they have.
Right.
At that moment in time. So we will start to get an indication, I think on September first, how many are converting, and we will have a running total with the building inspector because, or the building department, because they will have to pull a building permit for an accessory dwelling unit, and that will be of record.
So we can get that information from the building department?
Yeah, we'll get both. And we can ask, because we have done that in the past, David.
Can we ask the building department to be present at our September meeting?
We could, or we could ask, as we did in the past, the planning board had asked them when we were concerned about numbers of building permits going out, when we were really in a heyday of, of doing ninety to a hundred new buildings a year. We kind of tracked it for a year or so, and he gave us monthly reports as how many new building permits he issued. So we could always ask the building inspector every, first of every month, to give us a number as to how many ADU building permits he issued.
So that would be both conversions from ADUs and new ADUs.
Yes, because he would have to, in theory, on the enforcement side...
Right.
He, he would have to go in and inspect to make, or the board of health would have to go in and inspect to make sure it's got the egresses and everything else.
You know, maybe knowing that we would like that kind of reporting would help with enforcement a little bit, who knows?
Okay, I mean, we certainly can ask for the information, and that can start it, and we can keep it on the horizon and say, okay, let's keep a tab on what's going on. You know, if only one or two are being pulled in the next six or seven months, it's not a situation where we have to jump in anything.
Right.
If it's, it switches, we know we're going to lose, we know we're going to lose some, at least I, I have a strong feeling, we're going to lose some AADUs to the ADUs. What that number is, I have no idea.
Well, and also, the number of new ADUs is going to be extremely interesting to see.
Yeah.
And, and the data will direct us as to where we go.
Right. And I think that's a good course of action to take for the, for the start of this, and then we'll follow it and, and work accordingly, but I think on the positive side, with, with all the input that we have gone through with the petitioned article, with the selectman's article, with town council, we do have a, I believe, a very good jump if we need to jump into a new bylaw. We've got a real good basis to start with that we didn't have four months ago.
Right.
Agreed. Absolutely.
Agreed.
Jerry? Jerry?
Yes.
Helen has her hand up. Helen has her hand up.
I don't even smell.
Oh, there's just the hand, Jerry.
There she is. Hey, Helen?
Hi, I stay as a blue rectangle when I'm in the audience. One couple of things I'd like to remind you of, nobody's mentioned this yet. So as you know, when we got to the petitioned article, the second ADU article on the warrant, that is the article that was sent back to you for in quotes, review, right? The language of that article. That's the first thing. Second thing is, as some of you know all too well, right now, what was passed at town meeting, the first ADU article, is in limbo at the AG, with AG, and they haven't said okay to it yet.
Has it even been sent, Helen?
I would assume so, I think it has, but you know...
I don't think it has, honestly. I don't think it's left Town Hall yet.
I really... I would really hate to think that, Jerry, but you know what? I'm going to find out and let you all know through Karen tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
Next thing, next thing that's important.
Yep.
There seems to be out there in the world a bit of misinformation. What went to town meeting and what was passed, the language there was the language that four people worked very hard, every day almost, for weeks, and a couple of months, to make the language happen, consulting with Harry three, and I think maybe four times, Bruce Behrens, four people on the zoning board of appeals, first and foremost, the building inspector, the health agent, and a specialist who works with AADUs and AADUs all over the state, and works for the Cape Cod Commission, Stephanie Cox, and I think there's somebody else. But the point is, almost every word of the language that went to town meeting was not in quote, the select board's article. It was the housing partnerships article that some members of the select board put some language in at the last minute, which didn't actually really damage it. But the select board placed it on the warrant, but just as you would refer to an article that came and had been drafted from the NRAB as an NRAB article, not the select board's article, it might be good to refer to it as the partnerships article, just, just saying, I was one of the people that worked hard on it. I was not the only person, certainly, and we really did a careful job. And the last thing I'm going to say, very respectfully, and remember, I used to be on the planning board, so I'm saying it with gentleness and kindness, I beseech you, if in six months you decide you want to take a look at this petitioned article, and the language really is very close to what was passed, but not quite, please, so that the people that worked so hard on it, of whom I'm only one, can hear your exact responses to the sections, because at no point did you move in a kind of orderly fashion through the sections, which, in my experience drafting stuff, which I've been doing off and on, still learning for twenty-two years, regulations, bylaws, whatever, I'm not saying I'm great at it, but I'm skilled, I have skills. You go through it methodically, and what I would have loved to hear at some point as one of the drafters, would have been like, okay, this section of this bylaw, here's the line or the sentence we think is problematic. And that never happened. It was more like general stuff, because when we were drafting it, and this is the last thing I'm going to say, we did that over and over and over again, and we did it with good advice from people like Harry, Bruce Behrens, Stephanie Cox, et cetera. So...
Tarkanian, that's what people not know.
What?
Harry Tarkanian, in case there are people listening who don't know who Harry is.
Yes, you're right. Sorry, I apologize for that, you're right. But that's all I wanted to say, and I'm doing it in a very good temper, and glad that you're discussing it now, and glad that you'll be taking a look at the whole subject in a season or two. Thank you.
I, I would like to add the reporting that we're asking for, the AADU bylaw is gone, but the affordable housing tax exemption still exists, and we should keep an eye on who is using that with their ADU.
Well, that, that report, Alga will, and that's why I said, I'm sure that the select, I'm not sure, because it's up to the select board, but I believe the sec, select board will in fact have the assistant TA be the individual to monitor this process of the ADUs and the AAD. This process of the ADUs and the AADUs, therefore. That Assistant Town Administrator will have the information. As to how many AADUs are continuing. On September first. And how many are falling out and converting over, because she would have, or in this case, I'll go back, Jerry. The Assistant TA, whomever, would have the information as to, okay. We now have somebody that has signed up as an ADU with a year round lease, so therefore. They are kind of the point individual. They may be the second one notified, the building inspector may be first, but if, if we kind of let the building inspector know. We would like this information and we ask also the Assistant TA to keep us posted. Because I think the Assistant TA will become more involved with the planning board. If we're getting it from two different sources and both sources are exactly the same, we know we're getting the correct information. So I don't think it hurts at all to get it from both sources. What did I miss?
My point is that the, the spirit of the AADU still exists. And there are people who will take advantage of the special act of 2010 that permits, that gives a. Tax exemption for renting at a, an affordable rate based on the Barnstable County FMR. And the tenant needing the income verification. So I don't want to lose sight. That anyone who has an ADU may decide they want to make theirs affordable. It won't be called, we can call it an AADU, but it won't have that stamp from the bylaw, because that's gone. But they, it will be good to find out who is getting that tax exemption, who has applied for it and received it. Don't let, let's not miss that piece of reporting.
Well, that was part of the report that I was saying she would give.
Okay, I thought you were missing that it's an ADU that has applied for tax exemption.
I'm saying that the, it's simple for the, if one individual. Such as the Assistant Town Administrator is collecting this information. She is the point for someone to either file as an ADU. And say, I'm renting on a year round basis. Or that I'm filing as a, as a, under the affordable aspect for a tax incentive. She's gonna know that, because she's gonna have the paperwork that she's gonna require from that individual, so it's a simple reporting aspect of it. But she's gonna know also. How many converted.
Right.
From AADU, or not, even if we don't call it that, but from renting affordable. And coming off that list and going to the ADU. So we're gonna have an idea from her, the exact numbers and where they're going. It's traceable. Um, that.
So I feel like our hands were just slapped. And I, and, and maybe we should just let it go by. I, I've been debating that with myself. But I decided I'm not gonna let it just go by. Um, I think we were very clear with this select board. About how to improve their article. I think we gave them good information.
And we went through it point by point best.
I think we did that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, conceptually and directly. And, um, and, and I'm sorry that. Uh, it wasn't heard. That's all I have to say.
That's okay. Um.
I think if it had been heard, we would have voted for the article, we would have supported the article. So, um.
I didn't, yeah, I, I. And I would say, Helen, we're here right now in only a different way. I, I, I didn't feel at, at that particular moment in time, I wanted to take her on.
No, 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 no. And, and I debated it myself. I'm not taking her on. I'm just saying.
Oh, I've taken her on.
I don't want my hand slapped for something I didn't do.
I, I felt, I felt that I, it was a little bit more than a hand slap and I, I felt that, you know, we weren't changing. We didn't dive into it. I think we, we did a very good job. I think we were more concerned with. Special permit, we were more concerned with the number, we were more concerned with when Town Council came back and said there was a square footage. Um, that. It wasn't gonna do any good for me to get into a discussion with her that, okay, you did, you did a thorough job, but. You know what? We could have done a better job and.
Guys, Helen is still on the, in the meeting.
Well, Helen, then.
I don't really care, I'm just pointing that out.
No, no, yeah, you can refer to me if you wish. I'm listening and taking it in. Thank you.
Take it in, but I, I think that it got passed, we will work with it. Um, if we, if we see. And I think what we came from this with, uh, we, we came out of this with, the way the vote went, is that. The planning board acknowledges it got passed, it, it didn't get passed by a vote, it got passed almost unanimously. Um, I've been in this long enough to know the voters speak and the voters spoke. And they spoke loud and they spoke clearly, and I respect that. And until the planning board feels. That after due time, that abuses have occurred. That need to be rectified, that would be the point that we would decide whether or not we want to, to go back into discussion. Other than that. It, it's a fait accompli. Let's see where it goes and let's hope for the upside that a lot of units are built and. Will we, we're gonna move on. Um, it's on the books and the conversation. So, um. Well, yeah, I'll go, I saw Olga first before Bonnie.
It's my understanding that it, it is, it can exist now because it was voted at town meeting. We're not waiting. For the Attorney General. Is that your understanding?
David did ask me that question about, about that. Um, we're, what we, we're in a. A limbo, okay? It has passed town meeting and we are past July first. So consequently, we are now, we are now into that fiscal year and the warrant articles take effect. So the warrant article is in place, so someone can walk into the building inspector's office tomorrow. Uh, request a building permit for an ADU. They do that and the building inspector would issue the building permit at their. At their risk.
Yeah.
Okay, so they, they're at their risk, because if they proceed. And the Attorney General turns it down, then the bylaw does not exist and that permit is not valid. Generally speaking. The, and as I said to David, because he asked the question, and it is only my opinion. That the way the article is written in its simplicity. With no kind of number, um, a square footed size, um, by right. There may be a procedural question, there may be, just like happened tonight with, um. The public hearing on, um, the subdivision, there may be a advertising glitch, there may be a notification to the seashore glitch. But normally those things, the Attorney General will come back and say, repost for ninety days. If there are no complaint, then it's valid. So my feeling is that it's roughly. A fait accompli, the Attorney General will pass it, because when we sent it up. To, we had the question. That we had on a particular item that I sent up to Town Council and I asked Town Council to review both the, both articles. They did not come back and say, the Attorney General is gonna have a problem with X, Y, and Z. Everything was fine, you saw the, the simple changes that they had recommended. Um, and most of them were, were going frankly fairly simple in nature, except for the nine hundred squares. Nine hundred fifty square feet and the definition. Um, so I don't think there's gonna be any problem, it's gonna pass the Attorney General. Um, but there is that risk problem and, and it's just like any zoning. Whether we, whether it was passed by petition, whether it was passed by, because the selectman did it, or whether the planning board did it. Even if we did it, there's still that limbo until the AG gives us its blessing, and that's why Helen was saying. Um, I hope that the. Uh, town clerk gets the information out as soon as possible. Because with all the towns in, in the Commonwealth, having town meetings of this time of year. They get inundated with zoning bylaws, so it takes time. A lot of times, we will want to hear, if we have an April. Town meeting, like the sixth, like we usually have, um, we have a number of zoning bylaws. Sometimes we don't hear until late August, early September. Before they give us their blessing. So, um. I think it's rather quick to say town meeting was only a week and a half, ten days away. And he, and the town clerk got it out, great if she did, but there's a lot of information she's gonna pull together to, to fill out the forms. To get it up there, but, and then it's just in the queue as to how fast the AG is gonna look at it and kick it back. So I, did I? Did I, I hope I answered your question.
Yes, you did.
Anything else? All right, so on the meeting on the eighteenth, oh Bonnie?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, because I, I mean, I think the. Yeah, Helen's intervention brought up to me that, you know, people didn't hear or. There wasn't enough dissemination of the, the report that we wrote, which admittedly, just because of. You know, we didn't get final until just before town meeting. So I think it. I think it is important for people to. Understand what. You know, that, that there was, um, this process. Of figuring out, you know, possible concerns and dangers. And I don't know, I mean, it's not, it's not to. Not, not to help our reputation or anything like that. I think it's so that, you know, that the town officials who are. Who, so that the people, the housing advocates, the affordable housing advocates and the people who are overseeing. You know, the, the process are aware of the risks that we saw. And that we were pointing out with specific articles.
I think no matter. And I know there's some people on there who are still. For the subdivision hearing that is just staying in here to, to listen. And I don't mean to point out anything to them, but. There's a case in point here where I, I, I kind of looking at is this discussion was happening is, is. Those of us that live here on a year round basis. They kind of knew. Even though maybe things weren't as vented as the planning board would like them to be in this process. Or as much as we would have vented it, maybe if, if, if we had done the article, this, the general public still. Knew this was coming. Um, the advocates got the information out to the individuals that vote. I think those individuals that have summer houses, that don't vote. That are not here on a year round basis. That many of those don't have the information and I see. I see it being pointed out. And this is a due process that we go through with definitive plans. Um, that the state makes sure that public notification is made and it's thorough. And in this case, it wasn't, but here's a situation where we have a, a, a single lot divided into two. And you see the neighborhood concerned, concerned with septic, concerned with. With the environment and concerned with, with a lot of things. And then I look at the other side of this and I'm, I'm, I'm hoping it won't be abused, but I see the other side of this that. All of a sudden, we passed a zoning bylaw, which allows. For all intent and purposes, multifamily houses across the entire town of Wellfleet by right. With no limit on numbers, so someone could take the same lot instead of dividing into one lot. Uh, extra lot could put up three, four house, houses, even though they're only twelve hundred square feet. As right, and they would never be notified. Can you imagine the uproar? So, you know, this is, this is what the planning board. Sort of like I was alluding to is six months to a year, these are the things that I think we as a planning board will be looking at to see. What pops up? It's not just the numbers, it's. Do we get complaints as to, and I, I can foresee it quite honestly, is. Is someone all of a sudden not realizing that their neighbor could put up by right a twelve hundred unit on their property? And we get a scathing letter to the planning board saying, why didn't you give us notification that this was being done? I can see this coming. Um, and I think that those are the things that we as a planning board also have to look at, just not the numbers. But see maybe what complaints come into us or the Board of Appeals. Because many times the individuals really don't know who to complain to. Do they complain to the building inspector? Uh, do they complain to the, um. TA, do they complain to the Board of Appeals? Because if they think it was a special permit, that's where it was, why wasn't it notified? So I think these are the kind of keys that the planning board has got to keep an eye on to see what's happening.
Well, and Jerry, to your point, that's why getting the information about new ADU creation. And to see what form those take, you know, our worst case scenario or some other form is, is incredibly important. And I just hope we can track it, uh, in this, not exactly real time, but we can track it in a timely way.
Right, and it's just, and it's, and it's an amendment, not a reconstitution of the bylaw, it would be simply try to see if we can tweak it. I heard something. Olga. Yes?
Um, I would just like to add that I take a walk every morning around Indian Neck. And I am upset that many houses have three, four, five cars parked. Every day, and that upsets me. So there's another side to what's happening. An ADU does not put that kind of pressure on our environment. And also by right, we can build up to fifteen percent of the property. Just for a single homeowner, a single family. And that, that can be a huge, uh, by right. Building that's gonna happen and no one, no one can be informed about it unless they go to the, you know, building department to ask for new. Permits pulled.
It, it can be, Olga, and you're right, um, but if you really, if you look at. That fifteen percent lot coverage really plays. Substantially on our ten thousand, twelve thousand, fifteen thousand square foot lots. When you get into our thirty thousand plus. It, it's minor in nature, because those houses really are. You know, can, all things considering on a thirty thousand square foot lot. The lot coverage for those houses is probably less than eight percent. But, you know, there's all kinds of abuse. I mean, those could be tenants instead of owners. Uh, you know, they're renting the house and all of a sudden, the, the three. Twenty, thirty year olds with, with families and kids, they arrive and, um. You know, plus the father and the mother, and all of a sudden, there's five, five vehicles there and there's only three bedrooms being used, uh. The ADUs, they can have guests as well. So it's, it's just a play out of the way it goes, but. I think if we stay in tune to it. I think if we stay in tune to it, see how it goes. That's, that's all we can do at this point. I mean, it's, it, it's done and it's, it's, we'll move on.
Yes.
All right.
Summary.
Uh, yeah. Um, other than that, we have the, so please think about the AD, um, I'm sorry, ATT, um, findings of fact. What I'll do is I'll pull findings of fact. I'll have Karen pull findings of fact on one of the, um, cell towers that we did and get that out to all the members. Um, I'll see if I can't get a, um, finding of fact off of one of the board of appeals hearings that they've approved and let you get an idea of where you're going on findings of fact. I see a question mark on Bonnie's face.
Yeah, we, we, we passed the cell tower thing unanimously. So why do we need to now?
And that's a good question as a new member. I, that's a very valid question. When, unlike a subdivision where we don't have to do any findings of fact on a public hearing, when we have a, when we act as a special permit granting authority, part of that special permit process in approving it is you have to have a finding of facts on why you approved it, why it was an asset to the town rather than a detriment. Uh, and, and you'll see when you look at a couple of those findings of fact, it'll be very clear to you, Bonnie, as, as to why it, why it's needed. And that's why, rather than have you guys struggle with it, I think it's easier if we just kick out a couple of them for you to, to kinda look at and review.
So we're going to be
We'll have that on the 18th.
Then as a board, we have to do this fast finding and discuss it at the next meeting?
Yes.
And approve it.
Yeah. And, and that gets, that's good, that finding of facts becomes part of the record for the, um, special permit.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so we have that. There may be another item or two that goes on that agenda. I'm gonna try and keep it reasonable in nature because, um, it will be the middle of August and the way July is going, it's gonna be a chaotic time for all of us.
And we'll have the public hearing on the rail, so.
Yes, the, the application is in. Um, we have heard after the cutoff on Thursday from the fire department and from the board of health. So those records will be available when the package is put out on that Thursday. We will have the new cards back. It will be re-advertised. Town hall is now open Wednesday and Thursday. Karen, what are those hours?
Yes, Wednesday and Thursday, I believe from nine to to three. Yeah, I think nine or eight to three. I'll, I'll have to check, but it's until three o'clock.
Okay. So, I'll go.
This is an educational question. Um, it does relate to Rowell Road and 100, Way 100. This, I don't quite understand when a private road that's delineated on a map. It seems that, wouldn't you assume that that has to be built? Or is it a paper road and, and now we're at, okay.
I, and I can do that fairly quickly.
Yes, please.
Take prime example, Old Wharf Road, Lieutenant's Island. Uh, Lieutenant's Island, Old Wharf Road, you know them both?
Yeah, there are two of them. I know that one. Yeah, a wharf road.
Old Wharf. That whole section of Old Wharf. Lieutenant's Island, both the first island and second island. Those subdivisions go back to early 40s prior to zoning in Wellfleet. State regulation was that you had to have a minimum of 40 feet of frontage or 50 feet of frontage and 5,000 square foot lots. There was no subdivision control law of any kind. So therefore, when those subdivisions were laid out, they were laid out on a flat piece of paper. No topography taken into consideration. No hills, no dales, no nothing. So they laid out grid subdivisions, 40 by 80 lots, blocks of, of eight or 10 roads on four sides. That was it. It was approved by the select board at the time. Either the select, I think the select board was the permit granting authority and they would sign off on it. Because there was no zoning bylaws or subdivision control laws, they could lay out roads wherever they wanted and however they wanted. So consequently, they would lay, they would, they would sell off lots. They wouldn't put the roads in from, many times they would put in maybe one main road and forget all the rest of them. And they were up to the individual to get to their property. And so they would plow in a driveway where they thought the road was. So just like this particular lot at 100 today, many of those roads or accesses to people's houses are over other lots. They are outside the 40 foot layout. That happened on Indian Neck. Just beyond where you are. Somewhat, but happened more on Taylor Hill. Happened more on Old Wharf Road, Pleasant Point, and especially out on Lieutenant's Island. Um, it also happened over in the National Seashore off Ocean View Drive before the National Seashore came in. Those roads meandered in and out of the 40 foot layouts. So those are private roads laid out and defined on a map. More, normally a subdivision map. So they're, look, they're a private, private load laid out and defined. The access to get to those lots don't necessarily coordinate with the access being in the 40 foot way, just like 100, just like the one tonight. So Alfred's point, when he brought it up and I really didn't, because I didn't have it, didn't catch it and we didn't catch it back in 19 2008, because when Chet and Dick submitted the approval of not required plan, they never put on the access road. They just put on the 40 foot layout. We assumed that the access was in the layout. They had the layout. They had the frontage on a 40 foot way. Okay. Well, when Dawn had to upgrade it for land court, probably land court mandates more information. So he had to put in that way which meandered on and off the 40 foot way. And so then we were able to say, and I think it's legitimate, that that is inadequate because the access now is on a private way. I think the point I was making with Alfred or trying to make with Alfred that I wasn't sure of was, okay, if they granted an easement over that lot to this individual, that might have been okay. But since they didn't come in with an easement, then we were certainly within our right to say, no, it doesn't have adequate access. Move the access over. And you know, to his point, well, you passed it in 2008. Well, if you recorded it, it would have been done, but you didn't record it. So it gave us another bite at the apple to say, all right, now access is a problem because we're seeing the access is out of the layout. We wanna see it improved. And I think we were right, right on the money to say that. Did that help you?
Yeah, we can't say that the private way has to be paved or made. So it's really, it's a fiction in a way.
The word is just like a subdivision. The word is adequate. So we can say in a subdivision, I'm not gonna cite 70 Rowell because it's not on the table. I'm gonna cite subdivisions that we did in the mid 80s and 90s. That they would create a cul-de-sac off of a main road of 75 feet with a turnaround for one house. It would waive the paving if it, if it had about a 3% or less grade and say, just, just harden it because we don't wanna see all this pavement. So we can waive that kind of thing. On an approval not required plan, because it's not a subdivision, we can't go so far as to say you're gonna have to pave it. But we can say that adequate access is legitimately a 10 or 12 foot wide dirt road with feet on either side to get an ambulance there because you're adding a house. If they weren't adding the house, they could have left it that way for an eternity. And there's nothing we could do about it.
Okay.
But you're asking, you, you ask for something that opens the door for the planning board to be able to address the situation. And the only way we can do it is adequate access. Either sufficient frontage, so long as they have sufficient frontage and sufficient area and sufficient access. If they can't get to that lot because it's too steep, we have the right to turn it down. If it's on private property and it's not showing, we have the right to turn it down. That help you?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Other than that, everybody had enough of me?
Jerry, would you take a motion to adjourn?
I would love it. You spent so much time on that.
I do.
Minutes, I'm sorry.
I took the heat all night.
Yeah, and you do pass it on to the chair.
I move we pass the minutes of June 23rd.
Any second? It was moved and, it was moved at, uh, yep. Any second?
Second.
David seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? I don't have any changes. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Done deal. Okay. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it. Have a good night. Have a good. And we'll see you in the middle of August. Stay and stay safe out there because that highway is nuts.
It is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.